Welcome to the Mount Clemens City Commission Meeting. It is seven o'clock on March 1st, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order. Could I have everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Campbell?
Here.
Fournier? Commissioner Fournier?
Laura, you're muted.
Fournier?
Here.
Thank you. Good now?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Crapp?
Here.
Menzner?
Here.
And Voorhees?
Here.
Excellent. Thank you. Move on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. This evening, we have a proclamation for the Harold W. Vic Funeral Home that is celebrating 50 years, the 50th anniversary. Patrick, are you all set with, do you need anything from us for the YouTube piece before we get into this?
I currently cannot go live on YouTube. It is locked up, and I don't know how to fix it at this point. We are recording. It will be prepared for playback on Wednesday night and Thursday.
Okay.
I'm still trying. I will be trying throughout the meeting to get us live. I apologize.
That's fine. I just didn't know if there was anything we could stop and do to help you.
I'll have to restart the meeting.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and proceed then. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Do we have a representative from the Harold W. Vic Funeral Home with us?
I'm Mary Spalding, and I don't know how to get on the camera, so I'm here.
Okay, that's okay. That's all right. Okay, I'll go ahead and read our proclamation here. Whereas the Harold W. Vic Funeral Home is in the midst of celebrating 50 years of excellence in Mount Clemens, and whereas Harold Vic was born in Mount Clemens in 1922 and grew up across the street from Shadyside Park, he graduated Mount Clemens High School in 1941 and started his career at Hubbard Funeral Service, formerly located at 71 North Avenue in Mount Clemens. And whereas in 1946, Mr. Vic graduated from Wayne State University School of Mortuary Science and married his longtime sweetheart, Viola. In 1971, Harold Vic took a leap of faith and purchased the D. N. Cooley Funeral Home located at 140 South Greshit, now known as 140 South Main Street. And whereas Harold Vic conducted his business with the motto "To serve you in a Christian privilege", working with his motto in mind, Mr. Vic was honored with a 50-year license from the Michigan Funeral Director Association in 1996. Harold was also very active in the community while running his own business. He was president of the Mount Clemens Rotary Club and a teacher for Sunday School. And whereas in 2001, Mr. Vic passed away from an illness but left his legacy behind with his daughter Mary. Mary graduated from Wayne State University School of Mortuary Science and achieved her mortuary license in 1976. She was honored with a 40-year license from the Michigan Funeral Director Association in 2016. She was mentored by her father and worked together with him for over 25 years. Mary carries on Harold Vic's tradition as the manager today. And whereas Ms. Mary followed in her father's footsteps as an active member of the Mount Clemens community by being a member of the Mount Clemens Rotary Club since 1988, and was nominated Rotarian of the Year in 2007 and 2008. Mary was a member of the Baker College Board of Trustees, Anton Art Center Board of Trustees, Mount Clemens DVA, and Historic Trinity Lutheran Church. And whereas the Harold W. Vic Funeral Home Inc. has spent over 50 years in the Mount Clemens area and throughout that time has helped countless families during their time of need. Now therefore, I, Laura Crapp, Mayor of the City of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the City Commission and all of our citizens, do hereby recognize the history of Harold W. Vic Funeral Home Inc. and join in the celebration of 50 years of excellence in the city of Mount Clemens, dated February 23rd, 2021. Thank you very much, Mary, for joining us today, and we would love to give you a minute or so to address the board if you would like. Oh, did we lose Mary?
Hello?
Hello, there she is. Hi, Mary. Did you want to go ahead and say something?
Yes, I was just thinking that when you say 50 years and it's a half a century, it puts it in perspective when you use that terminology. We certainly have been blessed over the last 50 years. My dad was a great mentor and teacher to me, and I have a great staff. The pandemic has kind of reset where we're going moving forward, but we still are offering traditional funerals and cremations, of course. So it's just been an honor that the city of Mount Clemens, I was born and raised here, that has honored us for this 50-year celebration that we're having. And so thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you. We appreciate all that you and your father have done for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Are there any other announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports? Mr. Johnson, do we have anything else?
No, ma'am.
We'll move on to number five, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Crapp, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell.
The microphone. I clicked on it and nothing happened.
We'll go ahead and we will, we will go ahead and we, roll call, please. Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting where we allow the public to participate. All that we ask is that, because this is a Zoom meeting and we can't actually see you, we'd like to form a virtual line. So we'll ask for your first name to get in line. When we call on you, we would ask for your full name and your residential address and that you abide by our three-minute rule. Is there anyone who would like to get in line for tonight's public participation? I see Mr. Burns' hand up.
Yes, hello. Yeah, this is Mr. General McCants, 550 Clinton River Drive.
Mr. McCants, I'll put you in line, okay?
Thank you.
Do I see Teresa?
Ms. McGarretty.
Yeah, and Tommy. Okay, I have Tommy, Mr. McGann, Teresa, if anyone else. Okay, we'll go ahead and let Tommy kick off the public participation. Tommy, do you want to give us your full name and your address, please?
My name is Thomas Barnes, longtime resident of the city of Mount Clemens. Me and my family live at 291 Jones Street. I am absolutely excited about the possibilities of the things that will come to Shadyside Park this summer. Um, I don't know if everyone knows, but our group, TCB Youth Mentoring, won the First State Bank Banks Giving Contest back in November and was awarded a $5,000 grant from First State Bank to resurface the baseball field in Shadyside Park. That proposal is currently out for the city of Mount Clemens. So we are working closely with the city of Mount Clemens, the city manager, the DPS director, who has put together a great package to be able to help us and aid us in resurfacing the baseball field at Shadyside so that we can use it for a youth kickball league that we plan on kicking off at the end of April. I am also super excited about the possibilities of being able to take this defunct water fountain and turn it into something that is usable for people in our community. As a child who grew up at the corner of Clinton River Drive and Barbara, I remember when that fountain had water coming out of it, and my friends and I would play there in the summertime. Recently, my daughter and I took pictures of it. It is blighted. There's no water that comes out of it anymore. There was a barbecue grill in it. There were liquor bottles around it. There was a pair of men's underwear outside of it. And to know that Advancing McComb, the Anton Art Center of the city of Mount Clemens, has worked so hard to get this $75,000 grant to be able to put something functional there for the residents of the city of Mount Clemens just makes me so excited. So I am just so thankful for everyone and their hard work and the corners that we are turning in the city of Mount Clemens.
Thank you. Mr. McGann?
Yes.
Your full name and your residential address.
Yes, this is General McCants, 550 Clinton River Drive. Just have two couple of quick things. Right across the street from where I live. I was wondering if there's any way we can get a sign erected over there saying, "No feeding the animals, the deer". They really, really got to be a big problem. They had all in my yard, all in my yard, and they leave their droppings. And, oh, oh, Clinton River Drive and Bain right there, the splash pad. The Clinton River Acres and all its city's members over here, we are in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
They have expressed my concerns, but...
Sorry, Teresa, could you give us your full name? Can you give us your name again?
I'm sorry, Teresa McGarretty, 19 Inch Street.
Thank you.
And they have expressed my concerns, so. I did speak to a city, I did want to add, I did speak to someone from the city today that my husband called in reference to the tree cutting, and I told him that I've seen an improvement in our city with the streets. When the snow came, as far as trimming the trees and whatnot, I've seen some improvements in Mount Clemens, let alone downtown. But Mr. Burns and Mr. McCants have expressed what I wanted to share this evening, so I'm all set.
Thank you. Okay.
I believe Ruthie Stevenson was still waiting.
Okay, very good. Ruthie, go ahead and give us your full name and your address. Who is she, Ruthie?
Perhaps not. She did unmute.
Ruthie, are you there?
Oh, yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. So my name, I'm sorry, I think I'm taking someone else's turn, but, okay.
Go ahead and give me your full name and we can, we'll wait for Ruthie to, you can give us your full name and your address, please.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, my name is Dorita Delridge. My address is 230 North Broadway, Mount Clemens, Michigan. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm a longstanding resident of Mount Clemens, and I'm just here to announce or just really discuss my full participation and my full backing of Thomas and others of his initiative with the Splash Park within Shadyside Park. It's my understanding that this project is to be financed 100%, not from the city of Mount Clemens, but from a known partnership with Kaboom. So my hope and my strong faith is that the city commissioners shows understanding of this important initiative through voting for it and through supporting the recreational committee in getting this in. Yeah, I just would like to voice my support.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ruthie, did we get connected to you?
Can you hear me?
I can. Yep. Will you give us your full name and your address, please?
Okay, my name is Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain. Again, I commend Mr. Barnes and the rest of our neighborhood community for trying to get that park set up to be a park. And my one question is, is there any way the city can get grants that are specifically targeted for parks? I see it all the time, and with this COVID going on, a lot of the organizations are giving up money for parks and recreational arenas and areas.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to utilize public participation?
I would.
I'm sorry. Can you give us your name?
Yes, this is Beverly LaShure. My address is 650 Clinton River Drive, of course, in Mount Clemens. I also am speaking in support of this venture to improve Shadyside Park. This is such a viable park, and piggybacking on what Ruthie said, with this coronavirus, it is imperative that, because people are unable at this time to go to many other places, if we get our park prepared for the end of this summer, that we can restore the family values of our community by having a park that people will feel safe in bringing their children, take pride in bringing their children. We already have the horseshoes over there. We have the basketball going over there. We have the walk park, the playground. Let us continue in our efforts to make our community the best that it can be. And since we have financing, I would hope that the city of Mount Clemens would speak with those that have made the communications to obtain that financing, and let us get this done. Let us be the best that we can be, and I thank you very much for my time.
Thank you, Beverly. Okay, do we have anyone else who would like to speak during public participation? Hearing none, we will go ahead and move on to general business. 9A, approved fiscal sponsorship agreement with Advancing McComb. Excuse me, Mary, you need to do the approval of the minutes. Did I skip the minutes? Sorry about that. We'll back up before general business, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minute. I move to approve the meeting minutes for the special meeting and the regular city commission meeting on February 16, 2021. Moved by Commissioner Hammond?
For...
Supported by Commissioner Goodness. Roll call, please. Well, I'm sorry, does anyone have any questions or amendments to the minutes? Okay, roll call, please. Fournier?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead now and move on to general business.
Madam Mayor, don't even interrupt. Did you do number seven administrative responses?
We didn't, but there isn't anything listed, so. Mr. Johnson, just double check. We're good.
There are none.
Okay. General Business 9A, approved fiscal sponsorship agreement with Advancing McComb. I'll entertain a motion. I move to approve of the fiscal sponsorship agreement with Advancing McComb as submitted. Seconded by Commissioner Hammond, seconded by Commissioner Fournier. Mr. Johnson, do you want to go ahead and discuss this? I think we have a presentation also by Ms. Banks, right?
Yes, I believe so. Let me start first, and then I'll let Diane take over, and she's going to, I believe, show you some pictures. Advancing McComb is seeking grants to enable the construction of a fountain slash splash pad at Shadyside Park. They've already been awarded a $75,000 grant from the Kaboom Foundation. Kaboom's a national nonprofit that works specifically to end place-based inequity, and they receive significant amount of their support from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. Additional funding will be needed, and Advancing McComb intends to provide that as well. Total project cost is estimated at $215,000. If they are unable to obtain the funding necessary, we will not proceed with the project. The city should not need to participate in the capital costs of this project, but will manage the construction. We will also have annual operating costs that are estimated at about $12,000. That's based on numbers provided by here in metro parks for a similar-sized splash pad. Our intent in this case is not to have a traditional splash pad with features that look like plastic toys. It's to have something that's more artistically designed and attractive, but still is very suitable and safe for children to play in it. We have a fiscal sponsorship agreement between Advancing McComb and the city that provides for Advancing McComb to act as the city's fiscal sponsor for the purpose of obtaining and administering funds for the project. The city will pay a fee to Advancing McComb equal to 10% of the grant funds. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney, I should say, and modified by the city attorney. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Diane to do her presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. All right, well, good evening, Mount Clemens City Commissioners, Mayor Crapp, and city staff and community members who are present on the call. My name's Diane Banks. I am the Executive Director of Advancing McComb. I appreciate this opportunity to address this board regarding our past work in Mount Clemens and our future partnership, including this Shadyside Park project. I thought it would be helpful to give you a little bit of background. It's just some of the work that we've been doing in Mount Clemens to help better explain how this project came about and our confidence in completing the project as intended. So Advancing McComb has been around since 2014. It was created to leverage corporate and philanthropic partners to bring resources to the communities in Macomb County. Data has shown that McComb County under-leverages philanthropic funding. So we're using our partnerships regionally, both with our corporate partners and philanthropic partners, to ensure that that funding comes to our communities in Macomb County. So our mission is to strengthen Macomb County by connecting community challenges with high-impact solutions. And our vision is that Macomb County is a thriving collaborative philanthropic community. As an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, we're uniquely positioned to be an advocate and convener and collaborator in our communities in bringing resources and initiatives, such as the one we're mentioning tonight. We've done a lot of work in Mount Clemens. Actually, it started in 2018 with the Mount Clemens Community Summit. My predecessor from Advancing McComb, Melissa Roy, convened a group from the community to talk about the vision of the community members for their city and see where we might be able to help support bringing resources into projects to improve quality of life. And our takeaway is from that summit was to look at areas to improve the downtown area and other quality-of-life initiatives such as recreation. So just in the past two years, Advancing McComb has brought in about $350,000 in community projects and initiatives, mostly focused in Mount Clemens. Many of you are familiar with the murals downtown. That was a partnership with the Art Center and funding. This was the Play Everywhere Project from Kaboom Foundation in 2019. We completed the Cherry Street mural and also the Stair mural by the Clinton River. And in addition to a smaller mural outside of the McComb Family YMCA and the Art Center. Since then, we've also worked with the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan to increase access to youth sports through our Sportport Initiative. We also helped secure funding for the kayak launch at MacArthur Park, and we worked with L.K. St. Clair Soccer on their initiatives to increase access to youth sports. We've had other support initiatives, including partnering with the county on Cares and Distributing Cares Act funding to nonprofit organizations throughout Macomb County. We assembled a nonprofit virtual roundtable for support for nonprofit organizations throughout the county, and we continue to work with data collection, advocacy, and volunteerism throughout the county. So as I mentioned, Advancing McComb's focus in Mount Clemens started with the Community Summit in 2018 around quality-of-life initiatives and how we can bring some more resources into the city. And I mentioned some of those projects, the kayak launch, the first Play Everywhere project, which was the Cherry Street Murals and River of Mural. Sportport, that's a partnership with the city, the library, and TCB Youth Mentoring to increase access to youth sports. Sportport, Mount Clemens is the only location in McComb County for this regional initiative for youth sports. We also worked with the city of Mount Clemens and some faith-based partners this past summer to help increase participation in the 2020 census for historically undercounted populations in the city. We continue to work on other collaboration possibilities for bringing resources and solving problems in the city. And that brings us to the discussion tonight, which is our second Play Everywhere initiative called Cascade in the Shade. Because of our success with our partners with the city and the Anton Art Center, on the first Play Everywhere project, we were approached by the Kaboom Foundation to submit another application for a project in the city. So that is the second Play Everywhere project. It's called Cascade in the Shade. The Play Everywhere Committee, when we came together, we discussed another idea for this initiative. The Kaboom Foundation created this challenge to inspire kids to play every day and incorporate it into their normal routines. So they're looking for innovative ideas to bring play to unexpected everyday places. So because the first Play Everywhere project focused in the downtown area, we were looking for other locations throughout the city that met the qualifications of this project, specifically looking at public spaces. And the committee unanimously agreed that Shadyside Park would be a perfect location for this project. We have an artist rendering of Cascade in the Shade by Wendy Popco, who was the artist that painted the Stair mural along the Clinton River. So when we submitted the grant application, we had to choose a location just on initial discussion of Shadyside Park. So we're mainly looking at the west side of the park where the historical fountain location is for multiple reasons. First, access. There's access there for multifamily housing and other neighborhoods throughout the city. There's access to a transportation route, visibility from Greshit, and it's an underused section of the park. The exact location and the design will be based on infrastructure feasibility and community input. So this is just our initial thought when we applied for the grant. This location and the exact design of this feature, like I said, is still to be determined based on community input and that feasibility. Just as a reminder, again, the purpose is play in everyday spaces to infuse equitable play opportunities in Mount Clemens, encourage kids, caregivers, and neighbors to interact through play. As was mentioned, from some of the community members, COVID-19s produced even more need for the community to come together and have positive interaction. So as was mentioned, we were awarded the $75,000 grant from Kaboom. We were one of 19 projects selected throughout Western New York and southeastern Michigan, the only project that was selected in Macomb County. So we have divided this project up into two phases. The first phase is the construction of the artistic water feature. As Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier, this is not a traditional splash pad. Our idea is more of an interactive water fountain, used artistic design. So the construction, the first phase would be the construction of the water feature based on the community input and location. We'll have to finalize the location and cost and work with the city on developing an RFP for construction. But this first phase includes the water feature itself, the underground equipment, the plain surface, and the fountains. We estimate that cost to be about $150,000.
It's $730.
The second part of the phase is more of the artistic design, although obviously we're going to have a design figured out before construction ever starts. We'll have to add this piece of it second. So that will be the mural design on the actual plain surface. And we'll use an artist similar to what we did with the downtown mural project. So we'll have a call for submissions from local artists to finalize that design. And that estimated cost for that component is $50,000. So our estimated total cost is $215,000, although our fundraising goal is $250,000. And that includes a 13% construction contingency and $36,000 in maintenance for the first three years. So we're working with, as I mentioned, the Art Center. So we created a case for support. We'll be, after we have approval for the fiscal agreement, fiscal sponsorship agreement, we'll be looking for additional support. We'll be approaching civic groups, businesses, corporate giving and other potential donors to raise the additional funds needed to complete the project. So next steps, so tonight, obviously, is the first step for us to secure that additional funding because we were awarded, Advancing McComb was awarded the grant from the Kaboom Foundation. We are seeking approval from the city for a fiscal sponsorship agreement that just states that Advancing McComb is receiving the funds and will be releasing it to the city for the construction of the project. So we'll continue to work with the Art Center to raise additional funding needed, continue to seek input from the city, the community, and artists on the location and the design of the project. And we'll release the funds to the city for construction and maintenance. So the fiscal sponsorship agreement includes the fee retained from the grant. That is not over and above the funds that we've already been, it was committed from the Kaboom Foundation. Thank you for your time for that, and hopefully that gave you some good background into our role in this project and what we're looking for from.
I'm sure that our commissioners probably have some questions. So we'll go ahead and open that up. If you can just let me know who your question is directed toward, that will be helpful.
All right. I guess I can start.
Sure.
So Ms. Banks, you clarified several questions that I had. I was concerned about the city paying the administrative fee because in Mr. Johnson's letter, it says that the city will pay, but in another place in the contract. In the fiscal sponsorship agreement, it does say that the money would be retained from the grant. So you did clarify that for me, and I appreciate that. The grant is going to cover the first three years of the maintenance at $12,000 a year. After that, I'm assuming it is the city's responsibility. And I wondered, Mr. Johnson, is that coming from the recreational budget? Or is it coming from another place?
Well, it will come from the recreational budget. At the moment, we don't have a recreational budget.
Right, but in three years, you were going to establish one, and this will be deducted from that budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I wondered, Ms. Banks, you've got approximately for the first phase, $140,000, you know, to collect. And I understand you, you know, you said civic groups and other donors. Was it part of your intention to do a GoFundMe, kind of like we did on the kayak launch?
That is certainly a possibility that we'll be looking into. The state has, and now, Don, I'm not sure, I can't remember the name of it, but they have a similar type GoFundMe community places, I think it's called. So that is one of the possibilities that we're looking into, depending on our next steps to potential donors.
The program Diane's referring to is an ME-DC program that they did in conjunction with Michigan Municipal League, and I believe it's called Public Places, Community Spaces.
Thank you. And I just wondered, for clarification of the duration of the agreement. In the fiscal sponsorship agreement, it said the duration of the agreement goes to December 31, 2021. And in the approved grant proposal, there is a date of January 31, 2022. Are these two different things?
So in the grant agreement, that is the deadline that we have from the Kaboom Foundation to complete all reporting requirements. The date that we have in the fiscal sponsorship agreement is to release the funds to the city. We have intention on raising the additional funds needed by April 1st so that we can begin construction this summer. So we would have the intention of releasing funds prior to construction.
Okay. Great. That sounds great. I think this will be a fun addition to Shady Side and for all of the other residents, you know, of the city. But I do have a concern about the location. I would really like to see it moved back further away from Grashit. That's a three-lane highway. People don't always drive the speed limit there. And, you know, kids, they run and they jump and they play and they chase each other. And, you know, they just simply have, you know, want to have fun. So for safety, you know, my safety concern, I thought, just move it back a little bit. So, and that's all I have.
Are there any other commissioner who has any comments?
Yes, I would like to thank Diane for her presentation and also helping to obtain this grant along with the city of Mount Clemens, Kaboom, and the Anton Art Center. I think this is an amazing opportunity for the city of Mount Clemens and Shady Side Park. It will give an artistic view and a fresh look for residents who are visiting and entering through northbound Grashit into Mount Clemens, along with providing additional recreational outdoor play opportunities for the children and the families in Mount Clemens. So I just can't wait to see this all come to fruition, and I'm excited about it. And if there's anything else that I can do to assist, please let me know.
I agree with Commissioner Hammond. I think everything she said, I want to echo. Thank you, Diane Banks, for a very good presentation. You answered all my questions. And I am more than happy to do anything to help you get this done. I am sure that you will address the safety factor with kids. And you don't seem to have left many stones unturned. So thank you for your partnership with the city. And I can't believe it's actually going to happen, start getting going this summer. So that's great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Campbell, Commissioner Goodenough? Commissioner Voorhees?
Sounds good.
It'll be a great asset to the city, and especially coming into the city.
For sure.
I would just like to add that I think that Advancing McComb's commitment to Mount Clemens for the past three years, I mean, they've more than shown that even, you know, as a nonprofit in the city, they have brought resources, they have brought beauty, they've brought art, they've brought so many wonderful things that we can hang our hat on in Mount Clemens and in a relatively short period of time. So I would really like to thank all of the Advancing McComb staff for their dedication to the city. We really appreciate it. All right. If we have no further comments, we will go ahead and
We made a motion.
We have a motion. We, but we need to call the roll, please. Now. Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Ms. Martin, just to double check, can you read the motion back that was called by Commissioner Hammond, I believe it was? And Commissioner Fournier? Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond made a motion supported by Commissioner Fournier to approve the fiscal sponsorship agreement with Advancing McComb as submitted.
Are we good, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to 9B, authorize the sale of city property to Zion Temple Church 2011 North Broadway Street. Could I have a motion?
I move to authorize the sale of a portion of city property at 211 North Broadway Street as identified in the attached survey to Zion Temple Church for the amount of $200 and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary document executing the sale.
Support.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Fournier, supported by Commissioner Hammond. Mr. Johnson, do you want to go ahead and go listen on this one?
I'm going to call on Community Development Director Tingley, since this is his report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Zion Temple Church, located at 216 Court Street, has requested to purchase a 22 by 4 feet by 90 feet strip of property from the city for $200. The strip of property is part of the Housing Commission property at 211 North Broadway Street. Again, we have attached map and survey. A portion of the church's parking lot covers this strip of land in question. And it's been on this portion for quite a while. The church wishes to improve the entire parking lot, but it would like to purchase this property so that they do own it outright. The Executive Director of the Housing Commission has reviewed the request and finds it acceptable. If approved, the city attorney will prepare the appropriate settlement statement and quit claim deed. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Tingley or Mr. Johnson? Seeing or hearing none, we will go ahead and call the roll, please. Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Agenda item 9C, approve temporary relocation of Precinct 2 to 57 Church Street. Could I have a motion, please?
To approve the temporary relocation of Voting Precinct 2 from the Wilson's Gym, 58 South Wilson, to Christian Light Church, 57 Church for the August 3, 2021 special primary election and the November 2, 2021 general election.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Mr. Johnson.
In this case, I'm going to call upon the city clerk, Kathleen Martin, since this is her report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The city clerk's office is requesting approval to temporarily relocate Voting Precinct 2, located at the Wilson Gym, 58 South Wilson, to Christian Lighthouse Church, 57 Church for the August 3, 2021 special primary election and the November 2, 2021 general election. This move is necessary due to the Mount Clemens Library's use of the Wilson Gym during its reconstruction in 2021. Michigan Election Law states that a voting precinct cannot be moved less than 60 days prior to an election. The Mount Clemens Election Commission approved the relocation of Precinct 2 to Christian Lighthouse Church for the August 3, 2021 special primary election at their meeting of February 19, 2021. The Election Commission will approve the relocation of Precinct 2 for the November 2, 2021 general election at a later meeting. All voters affected by this temporary precinct move will be notified through a mailing in June as well as an advertisement in the Journal, both of which will be paid for by the Mount Clemens Library. Notices will also be posted on the city's Facebook page and website. On election day, signs will be posted at the Wilson Gym to direct voters to go to the Christian Lighthouse Church to vote. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Martin? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please. Crop. Yes. Menzner.
Yeah.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Agenda item 9D, approve amended 2021 DDA calendar of events. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the amended 2021 calendar of events for downtown Mount Clemens as presented by the Mount Clemens DDA. The final street closures to be coordinated with the Department of Public Services and the City Manager's Office.
Support of Commissioner Voorhees. Mr. Johnson.
I'm going to call upon Mr. Tingley once again, but this time in his role as Executive Director of the DDA.
Thank you again. The Mount Clemens DDA is requesting authorization of this amended 2021 calendar events. The amended schedule includes three new events. The Uptown Easter Egg Extravaganza on Saturday, March 27. We did hope to have this event last year, but it was canceled due to COVID. Second would be a Mount Clemens Car Show on Sunday, May 2, in a portion of the Roscoe Parking Lot. And then lastly, Mount Clemens Drive-In Movie Nights on six Saturdays throughout the spring and summer. And we will be partnering with Pop Sweets and Treats on these new events. And as stated in the motion, this is foreclosure of the parking lot and streets. We are still working on final details for these events, and we'll be releasing that as we figure those out. And Ms. Weiss is also on the call, I believe, this evening. If anybody has any questions, I'm sure her I can help answer those. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for either Mr. Tingley or Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Go ahead, Denise.
I just wondered, where would you like me to bring my hundreds of Easter egg that I'd like to donate?
I would, I mean, Ms. Weiss, do you want to go ahead and?
Yes, you can bring them to City Hall, or I can come by and pick them up, whatever is most convenient for yourself.
I'll drop them off in a big bin for you.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Hey, Commissioner Hammond.
I am looking forward to seeing them drive in in Mount Clemens. I'm looking forward to being able to attend. Shows us that we're able to see the light at the end of the tunnel by the DDA, being able to add additional events to the calendar. So this is exciting. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please. Sorry, Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Approve purchases and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Campbell.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please. Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Roll call, please. Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, City Manager's Report. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Starting with COVID, the curve is moving downwards, and it has been for several weeks now. At present, we have no known cases or exposures requiring self-quarantining among our staff. This is a reference to where you can get Michigan's current epidemic order, and just by clicking on it. The next paragraph on Mount Clemens Health Department Uh, the next paragraph on Mount Clemens Health Department COVID vaccinations is the same one that's appeared in the last two reports. I note that the supply is still limited, and the Health Department is still receiving more requests than they can handle. However, this situation is greatly improving. I know a lot of people that have gotten through. A lot of city employees have been vaccinated. Uh, at least have received the first. A few people have received the second. Uh, I've actually managed to receive the first myself. Uh, DDA, uh, we had another resignation from the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Paul Boone. Uh, the mayor will be appointing a replacement soon. This seat does not have to be filled by a resident of the district. Uh, and it does not have to be filled with a person with a property interest in the district. Anyone may apply. Uh, there's a link you can click to for information on this or any, uh, city boards and committees. Uh, note that this meeting is uh, has live captioning via Zoom. You'll notice that it's far from perfect, but it's not too bad. We're going to leave this turned on because it actually helps us meet a requirement to provide handicap accessibility. Order of Review will be meeting via Zoom on March fifteenth and sixteenth, starting at nine AM on both days. Uh, residents wishing to appeal their tax assessments can make an appointment, uh, by calling five eight six four six nine sixty-eight hundred, extension four. Uh, they can also just show up on the Zoom call. Uh, there's also a link for information on the tax appeal process. Uh, more staff changes, uh, trickle down. Nicole, uh, Ratusnick will be replacing, or is already replacing Jennifer Gialotti as payroll and benefits coordinator. But she will continue to be responsible for social media as well. And we're in the process of hiring a new executive assistant to replace her in the City Manager's Office. And the city clerk is also reviewing candidates for the deputy city clerk position. Uh, Fire Chief. Uh, this was approved some time ago, but, uh, last week on Monday, February twenty-second, uh, was Chief Greg Shipman's first official day as Fire Chief. And the first day that we've had a Fire Chief in over twenty years. Uh, donations for fire victims. It's been an incredible campaign to help, uh, the victims of the apartment fire. The outpouring, caring people wanting to help is beyond words. Been a steady stream of people dropping off food, gift cards, and monetary donations. Uh, food was coming in faster than we could truck it over to the storage facility. The community was asked to help, and they went above and beyond expectations. I think I'm going to call on the mayor to make comments on this because she has been very much more involved than I have in, in, in this campaign. Mayor?
It definitely is beyond words, uh, Mr. Johnson. Um, the, uh, to date, we have, um, we've actually asked the community to stop bringing food, uh, to the fire department because we not only met the needs of the fire victims in Mount Clemens, but we were also able to, um, pass on all of this, uh, the amazing generosity to also of the fire victims of a two-hundred unit fire in Ipslanti. And so we were able to bless two communities with the donations from Mount Clemens. The Red Cross, um, honestly, has been blown away by the response from our community. They just have not, they, they say they have not seen anything like it. So, so kudos to the community. Uh, we've raised about twelve thousand dollars in gift cards, um, and forty thousand dollars, approximately forty thousand dollars in, um, monetary donations. So, all of the, all of that money and gift cards will be given directly to fire victims to help support their needs when they get new housing and then to replace personal effects. So, so again, we just, we're so proud of our community and we, and we really think all.
Okay, and then the last item I had was, uh, we have received official notice from the school board of their desire to terminate the lease for the Karnes property. Uh, we have a meeting with the superintendent uh, this week, uh, to discuss how this will be handled. Uh, and then I have future agendas listed.
Does anyone? Sorry. Does anyone have any questions or comments for, uh, Mr. Johnson on his report?
Yes, I, I would like to request that we have a special workshop to discuss the, uh, Karn Center, um, after you have your meeting, uh, with the school board.
Okay, we can do that.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none.
Uh, I'm sorry, I do have a question. Um, are you able to tell us what you're discussing with the school board? Like, what points?
I'm sorry, right now, we're, um, this is a, the portion of the meeting. Uh, we'll get to public participation next, but at this point, we can't have the members of the public speak at the meeting until the public participation portion, okay?
My apologies.
Sorry about that. Um, okay, so any, do any other commissioners have any questions about the, um, City Manager's Report? Okay, hearing none. Now, this is the portion of the meeting that we have for public participation. Um, again, we'll ask that you get in line with, um, just submitting your first name. And we'll try to keep it orderly so that we, um, don't have more than one person speaking at a time. And for the record, we'll ask for your full name and your residential address. Um, who would like to get in line for that? Um, let's see.
Ruthie. Ruthie.
Yep, we've got you, we've got Ruthie. Um, we had another speaker.
Dorita.
Teresa. And Teresa has her hand up. Teresa.
Beverly LaShure.
Beverly. Okay, anyone else? Okay, um, at this, at this public participation, we do ask that you, um, abide by our two-minute rule. Um, I will go ahead and call on Ruthie. Make sure you give us your full name and your, um, address.
Yes, Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine Bain Street. As a sitting board member for the YMCA, as tomorrow, the YMCA National Day of Giving is tomorrow. And what I would like for the people in Mount Clemens and Macomb County to get involved in this. Uh, our summer programs are coming up with the kids, and a lot of the parents can't afford, uh, you know, the charges that would come with it. And we have been supplying not only, uh, recreation, but food and, and stuff as well during this COVID. So what I would like for you to do is to go on to YMCA, detroit.org, forward slash gift, and give, just give whatever. It can be a dollar, it can be two dollars or whatever. But I'd just like to show, know that, they know that, uh, uh, Macomb County is showing up just like they did with our fire victims, that they're showing up for the activities and the things that, uh, the kids could do. And you can give whatever you like, but once you go on that website, uh, you'll have a list of all the Y's. Click on the Macomb County YMCA. And I'd appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, Dorothy? Yeah.
Uh, yes, uh, Dorita Delridge, two thirty North Broadway. Um, so I just wanted to piggyback off of what was discussed earlier about the meeting with the superintendent and the school board. Are you able to discuss particular points about Kern City, or is that what the workshop would probably be about that Denise discussed earlier?
Right, exactly. And, but, and during public participation, um, we ask that people submit questions, and then at the next meeting, we address it.
Okay. Then I just, I guess I have another question because I don't attend these meetings often. Submit questions via email.
You can, you don't have to submit them via email, but you can.
Okay, because I guess normally in Zoom meetings, they have like the chat portion and someone moder, my, moderating the chat, but I see that's not an option on this Zoom call, so my apologies once again.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see another hand up and I'm adding you to the list. I believe it's Eric.
Yes, thank you.
It's eight o'clock.
Okay, um, Teresa.
Teresa McGarrett, nineteen Inches Street. I just wanted to bring about, um, the excitement from hearing about what's going to transpire in Shadyside Park with the splash pad. But we have to keep in mind what goes with that is a need for a restroom. Please, at Shadyside. Shadyside is the first park you see as you enter the city of Mount Clemens. It is also the park off of a major street, grassed. And so, you know, we're, we'll do our flowers and help pick up trash and whatnot, but if we're going to have us, you know, something for the children and adults for the water, we do need a restroom. Um, porta potties are not going to work. Um, then we're going to need, we're going to be looking at, you know, having some cleaning problems, but please consider that in, um, the funding that will come, and I'm speaking that into our existence, that will come, at least a facility for a female and a male. Let's start there. Thank, thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, Beverly.
Hi, this is Beverly LaShure, uh, at six fifty Clinton River Drive. And I wanted to address a bit of the, uh, Karnes Community Center, uh, circumstance. Um, I do know that, uh, that it's a very intricate thing, uh, with the, uh, ownership and the leases coming, uh, all the way through the architaces of Detroit. That's how it was previously. Um, I would like to, um, advise that, uh, we had formed a fundraising group, uh, be, we called it FOC three, where we had raised funds, and I do believe that there are a few funds remaining. I have not spoken with our group in quite some time because we disbanded, uh, but we did have funds left from that group. Um, we would like to, um, if, if efforts are being made for Karnes, we would like to use that money as seed money to, uh, continue something at Karnes because if we don't use that building, it is going to become an extreme eyesore for that community, and we really don't want to see that happening. Additionally, I would like to say that the, um, handicapped, um, wording at the bottom, it is phenomenal. I think that is great. No, it's not perfect, but anytime an effort is being made, then you can improve on that effort as time goes on. I commend the city on, on doing that, and I also commend the city on moving forward on so many things to truly make Mount Clemens the great city that we should be. Um, I would like to say that I, I, I do also, uh, want us to be very aware about the dangers of grassed with the splash. We have to really, really, um, be attentive to that and keeping the children safe as they are playing in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Beverly, Beverly, I might want to just add that, um, if you could contact the City Manager's Office about the FOC three group, that would be terrific.
I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Eric. Can you give us your full name, uh, your residential address?
Yes, yes, I can. Uh, my name is Eric Andrew Rick. I live at one six nine eight, I'm sorry, one six eight nine Hampton Road, over in the Seminole Hills neighborhood. Uh, and I'd like to just draw a little attention to the state of Mulberry Street. Uh, we host two schools, a church, multiple polling stations, which got a lot of traffic, as well as a little bit of office space for McLaren Macomb, all on the, I don't know, half mile of Mulberry that's within Mount Clemens. We've got pothole patches within pothole patches and a few that are three layers of pothole patches. And once we get through this thaw and freeze cycle of the winter, I know it's going to get even worse. I know money for local roads is hard to put together, and Mulberry isn't as bad off as Jones Street was. But, uh, just keep us in mind, uh, should we get a windfall of, I don't know, huge federal dollars or something? And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public participation? Hearing or seeing none. Uh, we will move on to Commissioner's comments. Mr. Campbell.
I just want to thank City Clerk, uh, Martin, for her, uh, facilitating and smooth transition of moving the uh, precinct two from the Wilson School to the church for the upcoming elections this, uh, summer and fall. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Goodenough.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say I am so grateful to see that we're moving forward with so many projects in the city of Mount Clemens. We, we understand and know that our city has been, uh, kind of dying off a little bit here and there, but I think it's we're going to come back, and I think, uh, we're going to do great things moving forward into the twenty twenty-one year. Uh, thank you to Ms. Banks for her, um, diligent work on her, uh, presentation and to partner with us. And then just thank everyone for being on the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
You know, this really was a feel-good meeting, I think. You know, we all feel, uh, there was so much partnership. We talk about advancing McComb and everything that they're doing with the city. I thank the Christian Lighthouse Church for offering up their facility for the, um, voting, the vote, geez, the voting booth. Um, there's just seemed like there's a lot of cooperation going on, and I was, it's, it's a really a feel-good meeting. And I also want to say congratulations to the family of Harold Vick and to Mary Spalding. I hope that you will be part of this community for many, many more decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you. Well said, Commissioner Fournier, and I would just like to add that, um, Karnes slash Jermaine Jackson Community Center. I'm glad to see that the city and the school board will be meeting and hopefully see a positive outcome with that because the community center is something that's highly needed in that area of the city of Mount Clemens. Also, um, I hope everyone can give to the YMCA for the Day of Given, as Ms., as Ms. Ruthie stated earlier. And everyone may know or may not know, today is the first day of Women's History Month. And I would like to read a quote from Madam Vice President Harris, "That dream with ambition, lead with conviction, and see yourself in a way that others may not see you simply because they've never seen it before." Thank you, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzer.
I believe firmly that, uh, uh, you know, that we're here also to represent the, you know, the businesses in the city. And so I have been to several places in the last couple of weeks. I've been to Weirdsville and Paperback Writers. Um, I've been to Max and Ali's. I've been to O'Hallens and Gumbos, and I stopped in at the Cake Experience, and he was out of the German chocolate cupcakes, so I was forced to get cookies. Uh, um, but they're very good. Where you go in town makes a difference to our local businesses, so please consider adding the, you know, adding them to your regular routine and your regular, you know, dining night out. Um, I, uh, was happy to attend with Commissioner Hammond the, um, cellar one oh four, uh, you know, winery opening. Um, they had some great wine. It was nice to see some of the business people, um, out and about in town. Um, I wish Mr. Gagnon a, uh, major success there in that, that venue. Um, Harold W. Vick Funeral Home and Mary Spalding. Mary Spalding donated puzzles to the, uh, Mount Clemens Optimists Club Little Free Libraries, and they were actually quite a hit. You know, usually we put books in there, but it was a new thing, um, to put puzzles in, and the kids really enjoyed them, and a couple of them were geared more towards adults, and you know what? Those disappeared quickly. So, um, thank you, Mary Spalding, and thank you, Harold Vick Funeral Home. Uh, my grandmother happened to have her services there when she passed, and, uh, and my grandfather, and it, they did a, a wonderful job, so, um, thank you for your service to the community. Um, thank you for the, you know, the, the work that you do for people in times that are dying for them. Um, I learned today that six thousand vaccines, uh, COVID vaccines are coming in. So tomorrow at eight thirty, um, one thousand of them will be geared towards the phone calls, and five thousand of them will be geared to. and 5,000 of them will be geared to the online, you know, sign-up. So if you're looking for, you know, COVID vaccine through the, you know, the Macomb County Health Department, please log on tomorrow and try and do it online because there's so many more vaccines available for the online version. And I just wanted to say thank you to the Mount Clemens Fire Department for their role in gathering and sorting the donations that this community gave for the fire victims of the apartment complex on North River Road. I was, as the mayor said earlier, I was overwhelmed and so proud of our community for their response to our neighbors in need. And thank gosh, that man got his little dog back. And thank you to the fire department for taking the ladder truck up there and getting him off the second floor. That was a very nice reunion and a very positive outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees?
Yes, I too would like to extend my congratulations to Mary Vick Spalding on their 50 years of excellence here in the city of Mount Clemens. Today is the opening day for the Mount Clemens Dairy Queen at Grashit and High Street. Best wishes to Sandy and Mike Patrick on their, I believe they're almost 25 years in business. It's the best Dairy Queen ever.
For sure.
And with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. You stole my thunder, Commissioner Voorhees, about the Dairy Queen.
We're Dairy Queens.
It means spring is here, pretty close at least, so.
It's a national holiday.
That's right, that's right. It should be, at least. I am so excited that it's March 1st, and that it means ice cream season is here and around the corner, and I also would like to thank the owners of the Mount Clemens DQ because I think they have one of the best-looking Dairy Queens I've seen, and they always make sure that their building and their parking lot and, you know, their entire area looks pristine. And I just really appreciate that that business being right on one of our main thoroughfares looks showplace-worthy, so thank you to them. That being said, because it's also with the topic of spring, the yard waste collection will begin March 29th. So mark your calendars and get out your rakes and your brooms and start doing your spring cleanup, and you can start setting out your refuse, your leaf collections on March 29th, the week of March 29th pickup. Cellar 104, as Commissioner Menzer mentioned, I was able to attend with Chief Shipman on Friday, the opening reception, which was wonderful, and I have a feeling that they will be getting a lot of my money for wine. And they opened to the public on Wednesday, so we congratulate them, and I think that people, I hope people are noticing that businesses are opening in Mount Clemens. We have the Cake Experience, we have the Cellar 104, soon we will have New Age Noodles, we have a coffee shop opening, we have several boutiques opening. We are one of the only towns that I keep hearing of that are adding businesses and not subtracting businesses. So, in a town of, time of COVID where everyone is struggling, I think that's something to be to be said about the trajectory of our downtown and of our city and where we're going and where we're headed. So I hope that people are noticing and that they're they're looking at the vacant buildings that we still have left and taking some interest and coming to town. I also want to thank the fire department for their involvement, but also the sheriffs, because they had a big big part of, and I also noticed from the pictures that our animal control officer was there too to assist in in the rescue of the Chihuahua that was out, and it looks like Newsweek just picked up the story. So, I think the feel-good story of the dog being rescued is going far, so thank you to everyone who is involved in that. I didn't mention earlier when I talked about all of the kindness that was given to the fire victims and the donations. I would like to thank the fire department because they hauled all the food that kept coming in, and Rui's towing came and on a couple of occasions and lent us trucks. And I would also like to mention that Vito Strolas is offering his trucks and manpower to go out to Pontiac, to St. Vincent de Paul, and pick up, they have a furniture, like a used furniture store out there, and they're going to give fire victims some, they're able to go and shop for some of the, for some of the furniture, and Vito is going to transport it back for them. So, I mean, I think it just goes to show the heart of this community, not only our residents, but our business people too. And so with that, I will say thank you very much, everyone, for the work today, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Commissioner Voorhees, supported by, was that Commissioner Fournier or Commissioner Campbell?
Campbell.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell. Roll call, please. Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Very good. All right, everyone. Thank you so much again, and everybody take care. Have a great night.
Good night, everyone.